I'd like to call the Daniel Council meeting for Monday, June 5th, 2017 to order. We're missing a couple of our council members. I hope they'll still be here in a little bit. So we'll move forward. We have four more. Do you want to start out with public comment? Is there any issue on the agenda?
Hey, we have a couple of folks here that would like to know where 825 stands.
Thank you. Well, as you were walking in, I think near the last meeting, when I'm at the understanding now, it's going to be sitting and planning and being chewed on and presented to us as councils. So those heads and that, you know, it's just going to hopefully narrow things down and let planning take care of it. So each planning meeting will have that until such a date.
Until they pass it on to you, is that the...
That's my understanding at this point, yes. We're all going to get chewed on and give us a recommendation. Welcome, guys.
Good morning. So we'll just try and head in that direction. I guess that's what they decided in the last meeting. Everybody just decided to split it out and just keep going around.
I had a comment made to me, remember, it's like, "We need to have less chiefs or something. Let's get this put together." It's like, "Okay, great."
You can go ahead.
Did that answer that question?
Thank you.
Item number two then, we'll turn the time over to Jack. Walkenhurst with All West Communications. He's got something to like to present to the council and to the town. Yep, and state your name for the record. Turn the time over to you and then we'll... I have some questions.
That's great. Jack, Walkenhurst with All West Communications, with telecommunications company headquartered in Camas, Utah. And over the past, well, starting in about 2007, 2008, we've expanded our network out to where we came into the Heber Valley. Started providing some telecommunications services, as well as high-speed internet and video within the city of Heber. We've been up in Timberlake since 1990. Moved into the Red Ledges development in 2008, 2009. And we're at a point where we're ready to expand or looking at expanding further in the valley. And hence, my discussion with the mayor, in order to start putting any facilities in and providing any services in the town of Daniel, we do need franchise agreements. That was where the discussion started, both the telecom franchise agreement and also cable TV franchise agreement. And so that's what brings me here tonight. Just to kind of give you a little more background on who All West is, All West was started in 1912. Similar to a lot of the smaller independent rural telecom companies, we're in areas that the bigger companies, the Bell companies and others didn't want to serve in. You know, the branchers got together up in Rich County and that was the beginnings of All West. Same company that started the company, or the same family that started the company, is still in control of it today. The present owner is a grandson to one of the original owners from 1912. We serve in Summit County, Wasatch County, and Rich Counties here in Utah, as well as up into Uinta and Lincoln Counties in Wyoming. So basically northeast Utah, southwest Wyoming. Over the years, we've expanded. We've done several acquisitions and mergers. In 2001, we purchased the Cold Bill, Utah Exchange from US West, CenturyLink now. As mentioned, we've moved into other areas as we came into Heber, over toward Park City, Evanston, Wyoming. Those areas are all competitive areas where we compete directly with other companies that are there. In some of the areas, we are certificated or a regulated company. Other areas where we compete, we are not. We started providing cable TV services in early 1980s and then high-speed internet services in the early 90s. We started putting fiber optic cable in the ground in 1990 when we came across the mountain in the Timberlakes area. And since the late 90s, early 2000s, pretty much everything that we've done new build is fiber optic cable right for the business right at home. And that's what we do here in Heber Valley. And that's what we would plan as we move into Daniel. We have had some discussion with Delta Stone. And that's what brought us to the point of needing to visit with the town of Daniel. We have no facilities in the town at this point.
What are your plans if you were to get into the town? Are you going to take care of the town fully or dig down a couple of roads or...
We would start slowly. Probably there along Daniel Road, possibly 3,000 south. You know, it's not something that we plan on coming in and building everything out all at once.
How's that?
Basically funding.
You got the money.
Basically funding. We have started something new this year to where within our website, we can do place subscription. So we can either pick out areas or if there's enough people interested in a certain area, that will sign up and apply to services. You know, then we can look at it closer and say, "Yeah, we can afford to do this because we have these pre-conditions."
Is that...
Yeah.
How does your service compare to CenturyLink?
I don't know exactly what CenturyLink is offering over here. We will provide up to gigabit services. So a gig, a thousand meg, basically. Pretty standard off our fiber is 25 to 50 megabits per meg.
Price-wise, how are you comparing to them? Same price, less or more?
I don't know exactly what their prices are. I'm not in sales and marketing. But anywhere we're at, we have to be competitive or we can't compete. And that's where we provide, you know, that's where we set our prices. 25 meg, I think it's around $42 a month. And that's 25 up and 25 down with symmetrical speeds.
So what are the pros for the municipality and center agreement? What are our pros?
Probably the main pros is just having choice for the customer, you know, for the residents and the businesses. There is, there are franchise fees involved with the franchise agreements. They're only on telecommunications, telephone, telecom services, and video services. FCC, federal government, up to this point, has not allowed municipalities to put franchise fees on the internet services. So, you know, there is, there is some monetary value for the city, but probably not a lot as far as franchise fees. It's mainly in choice and options for the consumer, for the businesses, for the residents.
Does it make sense?
Yeah. Well, we feel that it is and feel that good telecom services is very much a part of economic development. And we see it more and more with individuals as they look at, "Where am I going to live? Where am I going to buy a home?" You know, it's location, neighborhood, services, but also what the internet speed, what telecom services can I get in that area? We see that more and more. As we come into an area, well, just going back just for a minute, we talked a little bit about, you know, up to gigabit services, video, hosted business, telephone-type services, long distance, special circuits, traditional telephone, things like that are the services that we provide. As we come into a community, you know, we try and be a part of that community. Support of students and scholarships, chambers of commerce, other local events, activities. You know, we try and be a part of that to help and support, volunteer, things like that. You know, that's really part of who we are as a company as well. We're a smaller company. We have a little bit less than 10,000 customers. But we feel as a result of that, that we can be responsive, we can adapt as we need to, and we can focus on growth as it is prudent and makes sense in both ways.
As far as on the internet cable, do you run on a same line? Does some of the other have to help out with stuff?
No, we put in our own. Yeah, we put in our own. Primarily buried, is what we would prefer to be. You know, there are areas, we do have agreements with Heber Light and Power to attach to their poles if we choose to or if it makes more sense to. But primarily buried. It would be conduit, a couple of conduits could be put in and then we would blow fiber through those conduits. Yeah, through, you know, trenching, plowing, pouring. We do have our own construction crews that we do a lot of the work with and we also contact them. Just kind of depending on what the workload is, what makes sense, things like that.
So whether it's our business or they're on that line and it's coming through on a conduit and then at that spot where you dig up, get to that cable, cut into it, however, and trench into the house or up on a pole.
It's a little different with cable or fiber. What we would do is we come through an area, we would place about a 30 by 36 or 30 by 48 vault in there that is pretty much flush mount. And so as you come through there, we would place these vaults because as we blow the fiber in, anywhere that we perceive or would plan on a connection either now or in the future, we would need to have a fiber. You know, we can't quite cut into it like you do with water or gas or something like that. And so those would be placed as construction is done. And then...
Either go underground or up above.
Yeah, preferably underground, but sometimes up a pole, something like that to get to the hole. And, you know, nothing would be done on the private property unless the homeowner or the business requested the service.
Probably new construction would probably be the easiest thing to tap into that.
Well, and we try to work with, you know, if a development comes into the town boundaries or something like that, we would try and work with them, put time on construction, get conduits in, open trenches. We can share trenches with the power. You know, gas generally wants to go on their own, but we can share with power. So share trench, joint trench, things like that. And then place our vaults, connection points next to power transformers or service connections so that the homeowner digs or the business owner digs a trench out from the home or business, there again, we can share trench to the power. Just one trench like that. Any other questions?
Yeah, I think it's just a couple. Maybe, how many pairs? Are you really in the valley? Do you know that?
Yeah, I do. We actually have a 288 count fiber that comes into the valley on, per se.40.
Something along those lines?
Yeah, yeah, coming down.
288 pair?
288, 288 count fiber. And you can use fiber in various ways. You can do an active-type system or you have one fiber designated right from the central office to the customer. Or you can do a passive system where you split. And that's what we're doing in Heber right now for the most part. Some of our business customers, we have on active fiber depending on the band, but they require it. We do have a small central office over here in Heber right now. Looking at possibly another location, just kind of testing things out and possibly buy another piece of fiber used to act in the future.
So is there anything going down 189?
Yeah, we have fiber connectivity down 189 all the way into Warham. That's one of our main trunk routes out. We also go out into Salt Lake. We also have fiber connectivity out into Warham. So we have various paths out to our tier-one providers, larger providers that we tie in.
Is it ending at Highway 40 on 189?
No. We come down Highway 40 and then tie in with fiber that we placed on 189 about two, two and a half years ago.
So you're going further east on Highway 40 to there?
Yeah, right now we go up as far as a business complex just past the RV park. Right there. We also have fiber that comes all the way across Mill Road and right now stops at the LDS Church right there on 2400. We just got a little bit of a bill to tie those two together. We're in the process of working with the school district to get fiber connectivity into the school.
They've had to run that conduit.
What's that?
They would get a run conduit down from our side, but they decided not to do that.
If you're longer, it would be shorter to go the other way.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've had, you know, we've had an agreement or partnership with the school district for several years to share that with, do things that way. We do that with various, we've done it with Wasatch County School District, Fort Knox, or something like that.
So are you sharing UDOT?
Yeah, we've had a fiber agreement with UDOT, fiber sharing agreement with UDOT for over 10, 10 years. UDOT has been very good to work with, very helpful with all the providers to help get their services into rural areas. And it's a, you know, it's a two-way agreement. They have something that we would like to share with, you know, we can. Vice versa, if we have something that they need, share that.
How much?
How much for...
What is our franchise agreement? What does it look like? Are you that for a while? Do you have something?
You know, I have sample agreements, but really the next step is for the, you know, the town council.
Yeah, a proposal that might have been done prior to...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So we're going to want to see something that we chew on and...
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we have, you know, our attorney has put together kind of bar format or form. And just so you kind of understand too, and you probably do with franchise agreements, you know, they're pretty much, they need to be pretty much even, you know, like Comcast has a franchise agreement with the town of Daniel probably. And so, you know, we can't get anything better or worse than...
We still have seven pigeons.
Okay, no, you're, you're fine. But yes, yes, we have, have sample agreements that I can send.
Turn it over, we'll turn it out.
That's, that's great. That's, that's what we want.
Yeah, do you have a few that, or one particular one that David might have looked at?
I think I did send a couple to David that he has looked at a little bit. I'll go back and check with that and then see if there's been any changes or any updates. So we're making sure that he has our latest version.
Well, and just knowing what kind of inspire, that might be the best one because he, his eyes have already seen it. He may even carry that kind of thing. So he, one of them to start with anyway?
Oh, that, that would be great. Like I say, we will, we will have the two, one cable franchise and one telecom franchise.
You should probably know your references are good. Everybody was very happy, so...
Okay, great.
So that should probably something you should talk, as I told her, and the rap list to yours.
And they weren't all relatives, I don't think.
I'm not from this area, so, no, it's fine. No, I'm glad that you did. I got, Mayor, I think I left this, something similar to this with you when we met a few months ago, but I also left a little more information on our company, as well as we put out a quarterly newsletter. And each, each time we put it out, we highlight a business or a group that, you know, we've recently put service into. So there's, you know, their feelings about it and things like that. So I just seem to have three or four of those in there. A couple of them right here in the valley, one being Mountain America, another being the Chamber, Chamber of Insurance.
Try to roll them then.
Yeah, so please, yeah, please look that over. I've also got, I believe, a few more cards. Has my contact information on there. If you have any other questions or concerns as we start this process moving along with David, yeah, please, please reach out or let me know.
Okay.
I appreciate very much the time to...
Any questions from the public?
Yeah, any.
Okay. Good day.
What's David's last name?
Hartson.
Who is he?
He's the town attorney.
Oh.
We try not to speak very often, but... Chair will entertain a motion to come out of regular session and go into public hearing. And before I ask, before I do that, do you want to, well, we'll do it all separate, sit it together, or do you want to do a public hearing together?
Oh, I'd do it separately.
The chair will entertain a motion to, uh, public hearing to open 2016-17 budget. Allow changes in revenues and expenses.
Motion to open.
The motion?
Sure.
Second, do we need to close our meeting?
Yeah, go out of regular session and do a public hearing.
Okay, we have first and second. Out of favor, aye?
Aye.
We need both. Okay. We are now in public hearing and we are going to be discussing the 2016-17 budget to allow changes in the revenues and expenses, possible adoption of the 2016-17 budget. Turn the time over a little bit.
Okay, you've got two documents there in your packet. And not to be too burdensome with documents, the first one that's in portrait format has the 2017 estimated budget on the center column and the 2018 budget, which you're going to be looking at to approve. The document underneath with the yellow highlighting shows the original 2017 budget. So if you take that column and look at the revised column to the right, that revised budget is the same as the 2017 estimated budget. We're changing from the original budget and adding in revenues and expenses, making adjustments to the 2017 budget. So you had, we looked at the tentative budgets last month. This is, it was on a similar worksheet as the one in landscape format. Had the original budget and ideas of the tentative budget. We made, the mayor and I have met and discussed different aspects of the budget and some of those figures may have changed a little from the tentative. But if you would just review those, as you know, it's a guesstimate for the end of the year. And I got to have myself, the tentative budgets had to do with the next year, so we're not dealing with that right at the moment. We're, we have the figures in for, to the end of May. So we've got 30 days left on this budget. Try to guesstimate how much more income there will be, how much more in expenses. If you just want to look through those figures from the original to the revised and see if there are any areas that you're concerned with, most of the expenses are less than the original, but some have increased to get to the bottom line, the original budget expenses.
Just to remind us, it means the town general fund, not any water prices or anything?
For revenue, it's not much higher?
The, to the left of the highlighted is the actual as, what's in as of right now, which I had in on 30 days. So we're already at 185 versus 150.
So as we went through this, we just kind of, yeah, we certainly want more revenue than we have expenses when we do this, but we certainly want a budget that will balance out. But, yes, let's go through you.
The major expense under the highways is, is the roadwork that took place, the Chips Hill project.
You know, there's a lot of them.
Yeah.
It shows how busy we've been, huh?
Right, exactly. This is where they have the damn dollars gone.
And you see Z grows in some of those columns. It's because our previous budget form did not have the details that this one does. Some of those I don't think we'll use, but numbers were imported from the materials that Polaris was given for the 2016 and they may have put it in something that...
Tomorrow?
Yeah, we wouldn't have classified necessarily as admin taxes and licenses, but because there's a figure in there, we can't eliminate the line item. So this will get better as the years go by. And I know the form looks odd at this point, but...
So if I'm looking at the zero on bank charges, admin bank charges, and it's showing a zero in the original budget, did that move somewhere else?
No, we don't usually budget for bank charges.
Oh, okay.
There usually isn't any bank charges.
But this year we have 284.
Say that again.
There usually isn't any bank charges.
But if I'm looking at that, they did charge us 284 this year.
Well, and that could be from the Polaris, but they're very input, they're very input and things. So one of these lines, so we just came on one year, one month.
We got charged because we had a model from the bank. We just have to give them information and we'll return.
Oh, they charged us for that. So do we need to just add it in our budget?
So that figure probably won't change then.
Well, if it isn't an audit, you're not going to request information. But I don't know if we're getting audit issue.
We wish we did.
Well, but we are planning for the lower one because we didn't receive the key money when I was...
That's what I'm trying to... Yeah. We wish we did.
We lose official order, they have to, they have to, they should give you the charges.
They charged us.
So remember, this is just this year's budget that ends June 30th.
Right.
So if you see any items like that, then if there should be an increase or a decrease that stands out, it's a guesstimate. It's still not clear in my mind what the point of the exercise is when the year terminates in 30 days.
Make sure you're on target.
Awesome.
So if you're...
So you see those increases and we try to participate in some of the different things. It's only on a couple of lines.
Yeah. Yeah, it's all backwards from what you need to go.
The next one is the Daniel municipal water fund. And I honestly think that where it's showing the actual at 76,914, there's got to be another revenue source put in there besides water service.
For this particular, uh...
For this, this year, yeah, because it's got... For this fiscal year, yeah, because it's gone up like 10,000 in the last couple of weeks and I don't know that water service could increase that much, but we'll have it all worked out by, by year end and the auditors get a hold of it and try to get things straightened out of the program. But because the figure is showing there, I have to put in the revised budget, the larger figure, because it's there. But we're, you know, we're running 72 to 74,000 in water service revenue and then we've got new homes that will be coming on next year, so. But there again, it, it will show, uh, municipal in black even with the bond obligations, so they are able to sustain themselves. On the Stormhaven, we took a stab in the dark on expenses that would be incurred over the year and haven't run into any significant problems.
Can you, you can grab that off figures? Uh, we, we had a discussion on some of that other stuff and then maybe what you're thinking or what do you, how far is-
Well, remember, this is just this year.
Right, I guess this is your next, I guess we're gonna get into the last year.
Yeah, so, I mean, in the last couple of weeks, they've had just under $3,000 in repairs and things going on with the system, but that's minute compared to the extent of the, the system. So, you know, we will have to consider things for next year. But we've had an original budget of being 23,100 in arrears and we actually have a positive number. So it, this system too is so far holding its own, but there's about 30, a little over $30,000 in the bank account, so.
At the end of this, this fiscal year and hopefully a little bit more at the end of next fiscal year.
So if another question, I guess you can go out of the public hearing on this one?
Okay. Any other, any care, anybody there? Those are public concerns, certainly. Before we close out, I'm kinda going to do that, if you certainly want to get any comment, if there's any comment you can do. We'll want it. Okay. Ready?
When are you gonna hire full-time employees?
It's a good question.
Seems like we had a discussion about that at an earlier meeting.
We've had several years as, as, as things get like this, yes. It's on everyone's horizon and it's been discussed, uh, in meetings here, as you see whether items, and it's also being discussed outside of anything. It'll be that part, but we haven't, haven't, haven't had that trigger yet, but we know we're getting close. I don't know if that answered, that answered your question.
Well, I just think that you're gonna reach a point where you're gonna lose some people that are working for you and unless you take care of them, they're gonna be gone, so.
He's speaking for himself, by the way.
No, no. I, I don't know who wants to take that spot.
That, that's kind of the doctor's tale, the who and then how much and then where and then, you know, and then getting that, that right and so, um-
And then how do we replace them?
Exactly.
You know, and, and so it's been discussed with others. To come together, I just don't know quite where, but we're gonna, we've been thinking about it and we need to think about it.
Looks like it's only here for a little bit longer.
It is.
Sir, what you doing?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I remember Levin's gonna also touch on that. Thank you. Any other comments or things before we get out of this public hearing? And Chair will entertain a motion to leave this and to go back to going to a new public hearing.
I'll make a motion, we go out of the public hearing, back into our regular session.
Okay. You have a, you have a, okay, hearing, go back to regular session, you have a first, you have a second. Second, you have a second? Out of favor? Aye.
Do you need to, do we need to do anything when that resolution arrives?
There are two resolutions in here, you can do them after both public hearings or you can go ahead and do that when you're not chairman.
Let's do a vault that, everybody, we do them after we get the second one. The chair will entertain a motion for a public hearing concerning the 2017-18 tentative budget presented on May 1st, 2017.
So moved.
The motion to get out of regular meeting, to go into public hearing. You have a second?
Second.
You have a second? Out of favor? Aye. Back to public hearing concerning 2017-18 tentative budget. Time over to land it.
So this will be your top document, the right-hand column, 2018 approved budget. These are mostly the figures that were on the tentative budget, which was presented last month. I can see there have been a few adjustments and looking at the revenues, you might wanna make some more adjustments.
So then on administrative, help me understand that, line 4141. Our estimated budget is 42,000 and for 2017 and for 2018 it's 95,000.
The council is going to consider a higher salary for a clerk. I'm hoping to be finished at the end of this year, calendar year.
Well, so what you missed is, Lynn gave a presentation on, on her duties that we probably weren't all aware of, all the things that she does. And then she brought in comparisons of other town clerks and their duties and things. And, um, I don't know if we can grossly under from anybody, Charleston, Interlock and anybody that's even started, so that figure is put in there. We don't have the amounts, we don't position to pay yet, we just are trying to get monies in the budget to, to work those, those, uh, dollar amounts out to those folks. When we have that discussion, it's not just the clerk, it's probably, we're looking at everybody, but that would certainly be, I think, one of the positions that we're going to work on.
So what do we need to adjust on this again now? What are we looking at?
I would start at the top on your revenues.
Okay.
The prior year's taxes, you never know, and then the bottom one, fee in lieu of property taxes, you never know. You can see the figures that are, have been received during this fiscal year in those two categories, they're small amounts. You can put something in prior year's taxes if you want to, we left it at zero, you can adjust the fee in lieu of taxes if you'd like. If we leave the property tax figure as is, not raise property taxes, then you don't have to have the, um-
True.
True in satisfaction hearing. And, you know, we're just a little over that. I, I think it's going to increase with the building of the new homes that are in the pipe, so next year might be another story. I think your sales tax will continue to rise.
That was quite impressive, actually. And I was gonna ask you, Eric, my understanding is you've got, you know, the county and how the state divides it and we get our share, so we got a, the sales tax, our share was roughly 105. But if our, if we have a business in the town, does that change at all because it is located by the, I mean, by some kind of factor?
Yes, because it's closer, so your percentage will go up a little bit.
Okay, that, a level that down.
Yeah.
Is the overall figure based on, is it county-wide?
It's, it's geographic area, so they, they look at what's in the area, is how they explained it to me.
Not necessarily by county?
That's correct.
So what market is good for us?
Yeah.
It, it depends on how you look at that.
Money-wise.
First, I'll, I'll do it.
But you can see on the previous document, um, sales tax, was that 100? Oh, 105 and 16. We're looking at probably at least 112 this year.
Yeah.
Well, we don't, and, you know, we're not getting a lot of roads this year, we can get a little lower because next year, or, not this, actually, this is our next year's budget, but, um, yeah.
Energy taxes, energy taxes up significantly and I assume that is dependent on the number of residences as well, number of buildings, the guts.
Down home. We also have a telecom secretary.
I'd like to make a comment on our roads. Where it's going down to Salt Lake every day, our roads are a lot better than all Salt Lake area roads.
That is good. Detective care of our roads.
Yeah.
So Eric, you've had the discussion on business licenses, uh, we were conservative there.
Good.
Building permits, we're over 40 in revenues and expenses. Ryan suggested a figure of 30,000 each way in expenses and revenues, but there's some that's building later on, I know some of that's gonna be this year, we don't know how much will go over the next year, you might wanna adjust that, but I don't know what you wanna do on the revenues. We will have impact fees in both water and transportation.
Yeah, I know we're gonna, you two were having a men, Lynn did-
Right, yeah. I don't know how many, I mean, you get a lot of calls and then it just says and then, but then all of a sudden.
Well, I know there's been a long time that we have, just kinda dissect each line, yeah, crystal ball on all of them, and you, you were trying to use what we brought in this year and see if that's gonna be something for next year that's gonna be increasing and make our judgment on that.
Are, are our building permit fees in, kind of this, Brian, you might know this better, are building permit fees kind of along the lines of all the other counties and towns and things?
They're similar, yeah. They're, we calculate them all different ways, so it's not a direct comparison, but we're, we're similar. You, you get some people that complain they're too high and some people that are thrilled they're too low, it depends on where they built last before they came here.
Yeah. I was just looking at it and if I understood it right, if someone wants to do $500 improvement to their house, the building fees $216?
Yes.
That, that seems bad to me.
Yes, there it is bad.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but then you have to initiate inspections, I mean, the fine check, I mean, these are all people that are professionals we hire.
So, so the fine check can be on top of that, but I think Mr. Blatter's point is that $200 doesn't go very far with all those professionals.
Inspector.
Yeah, $500 remodel, that's-
That's a deck.
So, so $500 remodel would be, put a new door, switch garage.
Right, which actually wouldn't, something that simple would need a permit, so what, what it is, is an equate, it's an equation that's, that's stamped.
Is, is there anything that could be a $500?
No.
So why do we have that category?
Because in the fees structure that we've, we've adopted as a town, it had a whole series of between zero and, and whatnot, you know, between zero and 1,500, it was this much per dollar or, you know, this much percentage of the valuation, it goes all the way up and we've taken that curve and we've adjusted that curve, but we've never gone back to, uh, we've, we've never gone back and eliminated that, that zero, so it's basically just an equation.
We might want it when we look at those again.
So I guess to answer your question, it's, it's an equation, so it goes all the way from zero up to wherever and, yeah.
If you're a group at the beginning, it may, it may answer something.
There's a buffer there that, you know, you, you can't get in, but the, the equation went all the way to zero.
Yeah.
It's my understanding that it's, before you need a permit, you're basically building 500 square feet or more.
Also, if it's attached to your house, it could be less, but, you know-
If it's attached to your house, is there a limit or you just have to get one?
If you're modifying an existing structure or you're-
Like a pop-out kitchen with like a pop-out little window that you wanna have.
But, but Kim's point was that if you're doing an outbuilding, if it's below 200 square feet, you don't need a permit. So if it was just an outbuilding, it was small enough, that wouldn't need to be permitted. Uh, if you were adding square footage to the house, it wouldn't need to be permitted.
It's like a 500, but there isn't over there.
200. That's another one.
So I guess I, I can sit down with you maybe and show you that equation and how, how the town has it set up, but you're right, you can't. Something that needs to be permitted would have a valuation of a lot more than $500.
Yeah, it, it just looked bad and maybe that's, the rest of it I think was wrong, but when you see $500 improvement in, and a $200 fee.
Well, it sounds like Timber Lakes.
I just don't know how you initiate, you have to go to a thing that you don't require a permit at that moment. Well, what you could do for $500 that would really require an inspection, maybe rewire your bedroom or something?
In the Heber City, you have to get a permit to put in water here and, uh-
Well, yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying we're doing that wrong.
Absolutely.
Well, I think-
It does.
To replace or-
Yep.
I think to Mr. Blatter's point, instead of going down to the 500 bucks, we could just
say valuation below $10,000 fee is X.
Yeah, yeah, something like that.
Instead of extending that line down, just kind of, just stop the graph if you will.
It's not airing the data, just a presentation of the data.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll talk about that or maybe we could have a little?
I think we, we try to look at those fees annually, so that's probably time to look at and get feedback.
Right on, so it's 8:25 now.
That sounds good to me. Another incentive. Where are we on the budget?
Continuing down on the expense side, the salaries of 95,000 on 38, we were trying to make the balance, budget balance, expenses and revenues at the last meeting, so if you wanna just make that a flat 95,000, I know Eric mentioned there's probably going to be an adjustment on the public works week in a full section.
How long do I need to, you're trying to stop the-
Stop adjusting.
The salaries and wages?
That where you're at.
Well, you, you said that to make it even, right? To make that even 95?
Makes it sense.
Right.
Yeah, and then, you know-
Okay, I, yeah, just a way to just make, just across that.
Okay. Stop losses.
No, just, just look over the line, I, I mean, obviously taxes benefit go along with it, whatever salaries end up being paid, but dues and subscriptions, advertising, training, office supplies.
Ben, you get a, do you have a budget? You seen, you seen some of this, with these costs, we're trying to look, I mean, this is some stuff where we were trying to deal with your question earlier, that's, you look down under expenditures under the general fund, you're gonna see some items there that we're trying to help look at, what he brought up.
So, so we, we, someone said we looked at a bunch of numbers, have we looked at, has that been documented at all?
The tentative budget?
No, numbers for employees or, like what you presented last month.
I didn't have any of other clerks, but Eric mentioned what the Heber City clerk makes.
And I, I've heard that the, the Interlock and clerk was offered from day one, like 18,000, 18,000.
On a part-time basis. I think the clerk's position is still considered a part-time basis and annual. You know, even if you put in five or six hours a day, you're not gonna get 40 hours a week. Um, but you do have to make it work someone's time.
And we're looking at 7,200 for ours, right now in our current wage.
7,200 versus, versus what's in the dollar.
Again, I'm not complaining that our rates are too high or too low, I'm just saying we oughta doc, we oughta get some documentation on all of this so that we, and-
You didn't have a webpage, didn't you bring a webpage down?
So he, he pulled the comparison off the webpage that it had, though, just what we discussed the last one.
And, and along with that, I think the, not just the requirements that the job requires, but the training of the individual- but the training of the individual filling that position, I think would be important as well.
Training is, is probably something that has been the most lacking of all the things that needs party work on. Lynn, Lynn just got, and, and everyone just gets stepped over the job, and so I.
Oh, I understand.
It's all on the chart.
I, I understand.
Just almost about scouts.
Yeah, or probably worse.
And, and.
And they say have a home office.
But all, in the training, Lynn, I mean, you could probably comment, there's, there's some great clerk training that's offered outside the town that, that the, the clerks hopefully, I mean, Lynn certainly not have the help of the clerks could get involved in some of those initial training.
Yeah, we're going to a clerk's association that has monthly meetings, they discuss different topics. Um, I stay into a census training, election, I mean, whatever's going on currently. I do have the residence list completed, uh, which looks like they're going to conduct the census by mail, by online somewhere. Rather than knocking on doors.
What year?
Twenty-twenty. So they're already getting everything lined up for them.
Let's see how many people we have in town now.
We don't get a lot to respond.
Who makes the end of town with that? Yeah, that, 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 um, we got that figured right from uh
Which one?
The IT services.
Oh, from Chris.
From Chris, yeah.
So Eric, did you have something to add on the weed spraying?
Well, yeah, I don't know if this is the time to talk about it. Are we? Cause what we did on the old budget, what we're looking at is, we're looking at, um, I'm looking at buying a sprayer for the town. So, uh, they do have that information if anybody wants to look at it. It was a little bit higher than what Jim had thought, but.
So does the town, can I ask a question? So does the town responsibility to spray everybody's property or is it the property owner?
Property owner.
If they're not spraying.
The only time I show up is if they don't.
Okay, and then is that like something you notice or someone reports or?
We get complaints, the county's already called us this year. Thistle, mustard weed.
Oh, yeah, we got it all in our area, nobody sprays anything. County has always a lot of. I thought I was asking.
Well, it might, can I, I don't know how much.
Oh, no, well, look, us local people, but as far as I just, the town's responsibility is the public park of the town?
Well, really.
Like parks or red sides or?
There's a bunch of folks that doesn't want me to just spray it. My answer to them is if they do, take care of them, not if we, I won't show up now, cause they get really mad when I show up, cause I'm not that discriminatory of a like hill. So, you know, if there's some overspray, dang it.
So it is a law to spray our properties?
It is.
Like Wasatch law?
Into Wasatch County, and we're part of that cooperative.
Read the weed abatement, and we had to sign it and.
I just educated myself.
Does the, the county, uh?
So it's a misdemeanor, sorry.
Does the county provide uh that service also?
You can hire the county, um, you can also use our sprayers as a private uh person or resident, but the you can hire them outside, but that, and that's new since we have the new director. The old, the old ones, they were told not to cross private property lines, cause there's some liability issues, so.
For private, uh, another private law could call the county to, to do it, or if we had a, you would call the issue.
Not me, I'm not for hiring.
So, so help me understand, it's a county law?
County law.
To spray your weeds?
And, and I organize. State law also.
State law. Is it in the art ham code?
Yes.
Okay.
Does the county still provide chemical to each resident?
It depends on the year and what grants they get, that's all the grant program. And so the people that pick up that chemical need to report back how many hours that they spent working on, even if you're chopping and not using that chemical, they need to know those hours, cause that tells them how much money they get for the grant, and where everybody can go in and get some chemical that's free of charge. And so they, they actually track that and that's how much a grant is, so nobody reports, there won't be any chemical then, so.
Well, that, and then if the more people that do take it, the more they're gonna get, cause they want the weeds gone, so they're gonna pledge more for it.
Yeah, and they, and they, they put out a lot of money. The state kicks in, like I say, in their grants, it's, it's a big program, but.
And it's just noxious weeds?
Yeah, it's.
Defined as for the county?
State, state list is.
State list, yeah, it's big.
Yeah, county, the county just tried to actually do their own list. Um, I was buying opposed to that, because there were some, there were some things on there that I don't think are controllable in this valley.
They wanted to partner with?
Yeah, and so, uh, it got, it got, anyway, they backed out of that.
So would you speak about the state list?
State, state list, yeah.
Thank you.
And some things that are on the state list can be exempt from the state list in a certain county. So if, if somebody has, it's not a problem in that county, they can get out of that, that certain weed.
Uh, basically big stuff, the, the thistles.
Well, and we got so much new coming in, I mean, there's sulfur, zinc and foil now in our town, there's, we got, we have so much seeing, so many things. I don't know if anybody's driven up the highway, you get to the top of the hill and, and you'll see tires wooly, and it is everywhere. And if you go up in Cash County, that's, the whole mountain is yellow, and there's nothing in there, and that's all there is, and nothing needs it.
So, so how can the county come back and enforce a law that they're not even enforcing themselves?
They're out spraying as much as they can.
As much as they can, I'll spray as much as I can.
And that's a weed program. If you're out chopping, that's a weed program. If you're ignoring it, you're in violation.
Yeah, that will be the, that will be done.
All right, let's move on then.
Color out, all wrong weed.
I have a question on the spray.
Yes.
It is controllable. What is, is the town council uh gonna let the citizens of the town use this sprayer?
I don't know about that.
Well, you can use the county's, why you gotta just go down and get it?
Well, we've been doing, this is my sprayer that I have, I just lost a pump on mine, so I'm a, a doubt. So, yeah, and then I talked to the mayor and he's like, the town should own the sprayer, so. There is some maintenance involved, this is a, this is a high-pressure sprayer, the other one's going sixty PSI, this one won't go to, what is it, two hundred?
Does it have a boom on it?
It doesn't have a boom, I have a boomless, uh, boomless boom, that I, that I, so it, it doesn't stick out past my truck, they have your fans, and it's calibrated to drop, and so that's what I use on the, on the, on the town right-of-way, is it up to the water?
You know, a lot of this stuff is a necessity, it, it, you really have to start somewhere, but it, uh, well, I'll talk about the rest of this when we get the water, no one.
And that's, I, and that, so I don't know if this is the time you wanna talk about this.
Well, it's this budget, yeah. Yeah, so if one of these, it's probably a good idea, where do we store it, where, who maintains it, what do we do with it? Like, like disaster, can individuals rent it out?
I would, uh, as far as the towns, I mean, would the counties offer it to the county, they have the, 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 uh, probably bigger, better system, they're stronger, I, I don't feel comfortable with renting out to everybody, because those, maybe some people may not take care of it the way that we would take care of it versus the county, that's their program, they're, they're they don't take it to the county or rent it.
So we're looking at having it just, or? Our sound, and officials use it in the town.
That's all in my opinion, that's certainly up for discussion, I just think probably I'd get one broadly as far as we need to, we need to see it every week, but councils feel that we're on a, anybody use it or not?
I think I'm fine with that, I, I'm worried that we need a boom. But what if someone has a five-acre lot and not swing with this?
That's big money.
We don't wanna go in there with that.
I don't think we would do that, I think we let the county do that.
Yeah, we just think the county.
So we need one just for our?
Right-of-ways.
Not enforceable, we're not gonna enforce it, we're just gonna be right-of-way.
So to draw that driveway to the gun, but they brought in all that yellow, it's pretty funny, you talk about, if they, if they didn't get after it, and Eric had to either, I wouldn't have sprayed that. Give them their misdemeanors, they were gonna take care of it.